Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Audit and Risk Management Committee Meeting, Monday, the 23rd of November, 2020. My name is councillor Catherine Hodgson, and I'm chairing the meeting this evening. I'd like to remind all members and attendees to turn off their cameras and microphones until after speak, and I'll ask the monitoring officer, Phil McCourt, to undertake a roll call of the members present.
Thank you, Chair. Members, if you would care to turn on your video and then speak when invited to, to let the public know that you can be seen and heard. Councillor Bird.
Good evening.
Councillor Burgess-Joyce.
Good evening, all.
Councillor Cannon.
Good evening, everybody.
Councillor Gardner.
Good evening, all.
Councillor Greenie.
Good evening, everybody.
Councillor Jones.
Good evening, I'm here.
Councillor Kelly.
Yes, present.
Councillor Lewis.
Councillor Lewis, present.
And councillor Whittingham.
Councillor Whittingham, presence.
Thank you, members.
Thank you. I'll give a webcast notice now. This meeting will be webcast and a record retained on the council website. For those at home viewing the webcast, I would like to inform you that if you look above the video, you will see a resources tab. Select this and a link to the agenda will appear on the right-hand side. This will allow you to open the agenda in PDF form and follow the discussion and debate. Agenda item one, Members' Declaration of Interest. Do any members have any declarations of interest? No? Okay. Agenda item two is the 2019-20 Statement of Accounts for Wyrle Council and Merseyside Pension Fund update, and I'll ask Sheriff Halewood, the Director of Resources, to introduce the report.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, as you say, so this is the 2019-20 Statement of Accounts for the Council on Merseyside Pension Fund. Just before we continue with this paper, Chair, I'd just like to make the committee aware of just a minor change on the recommendations, if that's okay. So, recommendation three says that the Audit and Risk Management Committee is recommended to agree that the Chair of the Committee, in conjunction with the Director of Resources, be given delegated authority to approve the accounts on behalf of the Committee. There's just one minor change there. So actually, it is agreed that myself, as Director of Resources, is given delegated approval or authority to approve the accounts in consultation with yourself as Chair of the Committee. So there's just, in terms of delegated authority, that has to be delegated to officers rather than individual members now in the new committee system. So that's just one amendment to those recommendations to be noted there, please, Chair.
Yes, that's fine, thanks, Chair.
Thank you. Just in terms of the accounts, so members will remember that the accounts, the draft accounts were actually presented to committee on the 21st of September, and this report is really just to bring members up to date with what's happened on the progress of the external audit and any changes that have been made in the accounts since then. So I'm just going to ask my senior manager for finance, who's been producing the statement of accounts, Di Grisdale, to actually come in, if that's okay, and to take members through some of the changes in the accounts. And thank you, Di.
Okay, thanks very much, Chair, and thank you, members and Chair, this evening. As Share has said, we've brought back to the committee today the draft accounts that were originally presented to you in September. The reason why these are not final is because the audit has not been concluded on yet. So the external audit is still ongoing with Grant Thornton, our auditors, and what they will this evening do is give you an update of the current position. As the audit hasn't concluded on, and it will not be done so until the 30th of November, we can't obviously ask you to approve the accounts this evening. And as Share has mentioned, there is a change now to the recommendations that will follow. What we're aiming to do is have the opinion, the accounts approved and published towards the middle of December. Logistically, for us to get them approved and published on the 30th of November, once the audit is actually finished, would prove problematic for us. Just to reiterate, the committee does have a responsibility to approve the Statement of Accounts and the annual government statement on behalf of the council, including the Merseyside Pension Fund. The accounts before you now include the final Merseyside Pension Fund accounts, and the audit findings are set out in Appendix Three of this paper on page 197, which will be presented by Grant Thornton later this evening. As we've mentioned, there is going to be a change now to the recommendations. We want to really ask now for delegated approval in consultation with the Chair, if possible, this evening. So the four recommendations that I've presented in the paper is, one, to note the revised draft Statement of Accounts and the findings report for the Merseyside Pension Fund; note the changes to the published draft accounts that we've set out in Appendix Two of this paper; agree the delegated authority this evening; and also approve the annual governance statement. If I could just direct members this evening to pages 195 and 196 of the pack, Appendix Two, where we have presented a summary of the changes to the accounts so far. Now, I say so far because there has been subsequent changes to them post the publication of these papers, which I will update you on. On page 195, we're showing here the changes that have been identified and made, either notified to us or notified to the auditors, that we've identified post the publication of these draft accounts. Most of them are disclosure. None of them, except for one, has been changed. All of them, sorry, they've all been changed except for one. If you may recall, back in September, councillor Gilchrist asked how we were reporting the disposal of academies in our accounts, and I went away, I investigated it, and we have changed the accounts to reflect the correct disclosure for academy disposals. Originally, we had disclosed them in Note 10, and they should have been reflected within Note 11. It doesn't change the financial summary, it just changes the presentation of the accounts. We've also made some additional disclosures within the accounts. We've included what's called an expenditure and income analysis within Note 13. We have updated the capital financing note, Note 40, to the accounts. We've made some very minor superficial changes to headings within the accounts, so they read better. And one of the ones I would like to bring to your attention is in the last item on the page 195, Property, Plants and Equipment, Note 14. This is where we have identified that there was assets that are no longer in existence within the balance sheet. This came to light as part of the audit sampling exercise. We then discussed this with the auditors, and we agreed that further sampling would be undertaken, and also a review of all equipment within the balance sheet. And what this has now highlighted is that we have a circa 895,000 value of assets sitting on our balance sheet that should be removed. Now, we've agreed with the auditors, this is not material for the accounts for this year, and we will do a thorough review of all equipment to ensure that all assets that are on our balance sheet are still active and the ownership of the council.
Di, if I could just interrupt you, though.
Yeah.
I can see that Stuart Whittingham has got his hand up. Stuart, did you want to ask a question with relation to the asset register and these vehicles, or was it something that could wait until later on?
It can wait, thanks, Chair.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Di, sorry to put in.
All right, terribly sorry, I can't see the screen when I'm looking at the other documents, so I do apologize. There are then a couple of others, there's four other items on page 196, of which we've made all the changes, and then there are further changes that have come to light following the publication of this document. Again, they are narrative changes or minor heading changes to the accounts. So just to bring to the committee's attention, Note Four, Critical Judgments, on page 67, will have additional text included to reflect the uncertainty on unquoted investments regarding pension fund property valuations. This then brings the council's accounts in line with the Merseyside Pension Fund accounts regarding the property valuations. There is a small misstatement in the 1920 exit packages of £5,000, where we've agreed with the auditors, we're not going to change that. And then also on the audit fee note, we've had to restate the 1819 audit fee by £13,000 to reflect a subscription that we undertake for digital analytics from Grant Thornton. That is a very brief summary of the changes post the presentation of the draft accounts back in September. I'm very happy to take questions now on anything that you'd like to ask. But then what I'd also like to do is allow Grant Thornton to give you an update on their audit work that they've done for the council and the current position, and they will also probably like to discuss the value for money audit aspects. Then Ian Miles will give you an update on the annual governance statement, because there's been a change to the annual governance statement. And finally, Grant Thornton will present the pension findings report to you.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Di. Stuart, did you want to ask a question now?
Yeah, I'm coming later, Chair, following everyone's, you know, once we've discussed the other reports as well.
Okay. David Burgess-Joyce, you've got your hand up. Is it David? DB?
Yes, thanks, Chair. Thanks, Di, for that. Just a quick question on the 895,000. Do you know what percentage of that is shrinkage? And if it's a significant amount, what have we done about it that you might be aware of? Thank you.
Sorry, through the chair, sorry, councillor, shrinkage?
Well, basically, has people pinched?
No, absolutely not, no, these are, no, sorry, these are assets, these are assets that have actually generally been disposed of, or we had embedded leases. So £371,000 of them relate to BIFRA waste trucks, so when the BIFRA contract ended, we should have removed those off our balance sheets. So now I can assure you, there's none of that.
There's nothing, it's okay. I had to ask the question, because it was an awful lot of money, but thanks.
It is, yeah.
If I could just come in, Di, and ask, how significant do you think that is? And I know the auditors think that it's not a material problem, but obviously, once something like that has come to light, it does mean that we need to dig a little bit deeper on the asset register to find out whether we've got not just vehicles on the asset register that don't exist, but possibly properties, which may end up being more significant than the vehicles.
Yes, Chair, so with regard to properties, because we're valuing properties on a five-year cycle, and a lot of properties are valued every year, then I think the risk is very, very low there with regard to those assets. The equipment, we have £14 million worth of equipment on our balance sheet, and what we did, we did an exercise to look at anything older than three years old to make sure that those assets were still valid. What we have found is where it's been a replacement asset, so for example, a boiler has been replaced within a building, we haven't de-recognized the old assets. So I think it's a combination of some assets have been disposed of, vehicles or assets have been sent back if they've been on lease, and they've not been recognized correctly in the balance sheet, or it's been a replacement asset, haven't been de-recognized correctly. So I think the exercise we've done, we've been able to give the assurance to the auditors that what we've identified is, hopefully, most of those assets now, and anything that isn't, isn't material.
Okay, that's great, thank you. Joe Bird, you've got your hand up.
Thank you, Chair. Can I just ask, when anybody is talking in this meeting today, that you're very clear whether you're talking about the Wyrle Council accounts or the Merseyside Pension Fund accounts, the separate issues with each one, and I'm finding some of the terminology, if people just say accounts, I'm not sure which accounts you're talking about, thanks.
Okay, thanks, Jo. Does anybody else want to ask any questions? David, you still got your hand up, and Stuart, you've got yours. Is this, you're staying up, Stuart, for later on?
Sorry, Chair, I'll put mine down, sorry.
Does anybody else want to ask?
Yeah, I'll keep mine up, Chair. By the time we get there, probably it'll be an old hand.
Yeah, okay, I'll try not to ignore it. Does anybody else want to ask? Diane, any other questions? No? Right, well, if that's the case, do you want to carry on, Di? Did you want to go on to number two?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I think at this point, it might be wise if we invite Grant Thornton in to discuss the current position of their audit.
Thank you, Chair. My name's Mark Stocks, I'm the partner with Grant Thornton, so I'm responsible for the conduct of your audit. So I'll talk you through a number of things. I'll talk you through where we are with the audit and what's outstanding, and give you a little bit of an explanation for the delays. I'll talk you through sort of a control deficiency that we've identified that I just need to draw to your attention. For the majority of my time, I'll talk about the financial sustainability of the council, what that means for the audit, and what that means for Wyrle Council. In terms of the audit, it's quite difficult to audit in a COVID environment. Obviously, we're not on site with the council, and so it does take time to try and get through the evidence and to, you know, get the surety that we need, so we can give you the assurance that you need on the council's financial statements. Stuart will talk later about the pension fund statements, where we have managed to conclude. I have to say, the finance team have worked tirelessly with us. It's been a really positive experience in terms of the support that they provided. There has been, I think, some problems in how they've managed to get information out of other services, but again, I think we have to just reflect that that's not unusual in these difficult times for everybody. I think we're tantalizingly close to actually completing the audit. We'd hope to make it for today. I think it's more likely that we'll finish around mid-December, and so there's a decision for the committee as to whether it wants to meet in mid-December to take the audit report and the final opinion. So the things that are outstanding at the moment, basically property valuation and investment property valuation, that's quite a technical area, so we're following up a number of queries with the authority and the valuers, but that takes time. And then there's issues around sort of, you know, getting investment confirmations, we've got some sample testing to do. You need to sort of get the final letter from the pension fund auditor, but all of that, I think, is doable in the next weeks, and hopefully we'll be able to close down the audit before Christmas. I said I'd just talk to you about a control issue. Now, this isn't an unusual control issue, it's one that we find at many councils, and you just need to determine how you want to respond to it. One of the facilities available within the ledger system is to use something called a journal, which allows you to sort of process transactions and move between ledger codes. It's a legitimate process and is used well in many authorities, including. What we do when we look at journals, we look for whether, well, how many are posted, and who they're posted by, and are there authorization procedures there, so that somebody's reviewing those journals, because unfortunately, they can be used to change the reported financial position of councils, and on occasion to commit fraud. Now, we've not identified any sort of issues in terms of sort of, you know, deliberate fraud or error, but we do think your controls could be improved. You know, the same officer is able to both post the journal and authorize the journal, which gives them a significant amount of control. We've discussed that with Di and the section, Share's section 151, and we understand you are going to put improved controls for the next financial year. I'll just come on to financial sustainability now. Obviously, I've only been with Wyrle a short time, but the first thing that came to my attention was the financial sustainability of the council, and I understand that audit committee members have been provided with a letter that I wrote to Share's section 151 in terms of my concerns over the council's financial stability. The council has a history of setting a balanced budget, but to do that, it's drawn on the reserves that it's always had in place. So in March 2015, the council had £106 million worth of reserves. By March 19, it had £70 million of usable reserves. Similarly, for the 1920 budget, the council planned and utilized £26 million of its reserves. Now, that's only sustainable over a short period of time. And when the council entered into 2021, it recognized that it could only draw down a small level of reserves, and so it planned to utilize about 6.4 million of reserves, and it put in place savings plans of around £30 million to deal with the financial pressures that it was under. Unfortunately, the impact of COVID has meant that the council hasn't been able to deliver the savings that it had planned, and so as we see it here today, very little has been delivered in terms of those financial savings. What that means is that there's a real potential for the council's reserves to be significantly depleted at the end of this financial year. In response to that, the council has had to apply to MHCLG for a capitalization directive that would allow it to capitalize revenue costs over a period of two years of around circa £60 million. Given the circumstances, I don't think that's an unreasonable response by the council. There is a clear reality, though, that that's not sustainable. It's not sustainable for you to continue to draw down, sorry, to capitalize revenue in that way. So alongside that, it's very important that the council works on a service plan that will set out sort of how it's going to reduce costs, because you only have a short period of time, you know, £60 million sounds like a lot of money, but, you know, half of that will go to balance out 2021, and the other half will go out to balance 2021, 22. So literally, you only have sort of 15 months to get your finances in order, otherwise you'll be starting to reduce your reserves to a level that I don't think is sustainable. So in terms of what that means for the audit, so members will recall that under the NEOs Code of Practice, we have to issue an opinion and a conclusion, so the opinions on the financial statements of the council. The value for many conclusion is around sort of the economy efficiency and effectiveness of the council managing its resources. In terms of the value for many conclusion, I intend to issue an adverse opinion, an adverse conclusion for the 1920 financial year. That's the worst form of conclusion I can reach, that basically says that the council didn't have proper arrangements in place to manage its finances during that period. In terms of the financial statements, I would hope that we could still give an unqualified opinion. So, you know, there's work that I'm doing with the council around its going concern assessment, which I think will be fine, because while your revenue's short, you do have the ability to borrow if you need sort of cash to continue to operate. I do have some concerns about the level of temporary borrowing that the council holds, and again, I think there's a need to move to more long-term borrowing to sort of manage that liquidity risk. So in terms of the opinion, if we're happy with the council's going concern assessment, and you receive the capitalization directive from MHCLG, then it will be an unqualified opinion, and that will be the end of it, and we'll move on and sort of monitor against next year and how you're progressing against delivering those savings. If the capitalization directive isn't received, and you're not able to put in sort of sufficient plans to make those savings during 2021 and 2122, then there is potential that your director of finance may have to issue what's called a section 114 notice, at which point we would be asking you to sort of do a significant disclosure in the accounts around going concern and sort of the uncertainty around the financial position, and we would issue what's called an emphasis of matter. Now, that's not a qualified opinion, but what it does do is draw the reader's attention to these sort of significant circumstances that the council finds itself in. As you can see from the time that I've spent just talking about this, I have significant concerns about the financial position of the council. I think it's important that as an audit committee, you ensure that the council responds to that position and just put in place the appropriate plans, so that it can ensure its future financial sustainability. Recognize that's a lot of information to take in. I'm more than happy to take questions, but I'll pause, Chair, and hand back to you now. Thank you very much for listening.
Thanks, Mark. Do any of the members of the committee want to make or ask any questions or make any comments at the moment? David Burgess-Joyce, your hand is up, and then Joe Bird.
Hello, Mark. Just a very brief one. On page 230, you recognize the difference in the governance system that's going forward, so the difference between the cabinet, where you were specifically talking about having sort of a critical friend to look at cabinet decisions. You're now moving, obviously, to a committee system. But I noticed in there, when you talk about the new political arrangements, there's clearly some risk in there, which talks about you accept the committee system, but you wonder whether it's going to change the culture of decision-making. I'm just wondering if you could sort of clarify that, because my naivety is that the committee system might make it a little bit more democratic, a little bit more transparent to all parties, but it doesn't read that way. Maybe I've misread it. Have you got 230 there, or have I rabbit it on too much? Do you know what I'm looking at?
I am struggling to find 230. I've sort of downloaded.
Yeah, do you want me to briefly read the bit that refers to it? It talks about new political arrangements in 2021, and it specifically says, "The process of change will advise a number of associated risks, which will need to be identified and managed as part of the ongoing process and implementation post-September 2020. A key risk to the objectives of the decision made by the council is that a change to the form of governance arrangements, i.e. cabinet to committee, fails to bring with it the desired change in culture." Now, as the auditor, I'm just wondering what you're expecting to see next year that, you know, you're not seeing this year, because you specifically talked this year about getting a critical friend to look at cabinet decisions, and of course, we've changed the way that we do things now. So I put you on the spot there, I do apologize.
Di, are you talking about the annual governance statement?
Yeah, page 230, and it's got the lead officer, obviously, is Phil McCourt, as you would expect, but it's specifically talking about you recognize the change in the governance system, but you do think that there's still a risk there if it doesn't change the culture.
Okay, so I'm going to move away from the document and just answer your question directly, councillor. So. So, so. So I have no concerns about the, the governance system that you've put in. So, but it's a structure, it's a, it's a perfectly adequate structure. It's an appropriate structure. It's the one that members have decided to, to implement. So that's, that's perfectly acceptable for me. What we look for in any governance structure is, is not just the policies and processes. We, we look at how it actually works. Because it's sort of, you know, this is, is not just about sort of policies and procedures. It's about how constructively you work with officers. It's about sort of how constructively you, you work together as members. And to be candid, whether you're willing to make the difficult decisions. So, so I, yeah, I, I'm completely comfortable with, with what you've done. I think you've got some really hard decisions to take going forward. So I'm looking to see that you, you make the system work in an effective way.
Thanks very much, Mark. I apologize for the, the clarification requirement, but it, it's a sensitive time and I think we just wanted your feedback. Thank, thanks for that, Mark.
No, I think that's fair. I'm more than happy to ask questions. That's fine, in terms of questions.
Thanks, David. Does Joe Bird next with a hand up and then Ian Lewis? Joe?
Thanks very much, Chair, and thank you to the external auditor for your forthright account and for your letter, which I received three days ago. There's, there's quite a lot to take in, as you said, and I noticed that, and this is a kind of inner context where, where you, you talk quite openly about the possibility of a section one one four notice, which has also happened recently with Croydon Council and a couple of years ago with Northamptonshire. And you talked about some specific examples of things that would put financial sustainability at risk, like thirty two million pounds planned capital expenditure in the economy and growth directorate. So I, I sit on that committee and I've been asking for information since it started eight weeks ago and it hasn't yet come forward, unfortunately. And I'm wondering, the phrase, you know, corporate blindness has been used in regards to one of the, the other councils that I've mentioned. Do you think that WIRL council is suffering from corporate blindness or not?
I've not formed that judgment yet. So, so I am, my, my discussions with, with officers have been, been very clear and very candid. And I've been, been impressed about their openness and their willingness to, to make the changes that they, that they know are necessary. So the, my conversations with them are that, that the members of the council understand the, this position so, and are beginning to take the actions that, that both officers and myself think are necessary to make sure that, that the council is financially sustainable. I will, I will hold judgment until I see those policies enacted. So, you know, I'm particularly looking at the, at the Policy and Resources Committee, which I think is, is either later this week or, or really in December. And that's a key committee for me. So I'm looking for that committee to put in place significant plans in terms of, of what you need to do to, to secure services for the future.
Thanks, Joe.
If I could come back on just another thing. Thanks for that. I'm a relatively new member of this committee, but I, I understood you mentioned the possibility of meeting in mid-December with yourself as auditor and the full committee. And I would welcome that opportunity. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Ian Lewis?
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Chair, and thanks, Mark, for your candid, candid report tonight. Just to pick up on councillor Bird's point, I think, I, I would share her view that I think it would be useful for this committee chair to meet in mid-December, simply because of the seriousness of the, the position that we, we are in and that has been reported to us again tonight. I have to say, some of the things that you've told us tonight, Mark, it doesn't come as a complete surprise, to be quite honest. I, I, I think the lack of financial controls in the authority has been well-known for a number of years, or what, sorry, has been suspected for a number of years. And I think to answer or to agree with councillor Burgess-Joyce, I think moving to the system that we've moved to will help that process to bring those lack of controls to the fore, not only for your satisfaction, but also for those of the taxpayer and for the people that we represent. So I, I do think that moving to the committee system will make things more transparent and it will make these kind of tough decisions more likely. Because, you know, instead of having a few people who can kick the difficult decisions down the tracks, we have a committee that obviously is going to be held to account for taking those decisions on whichever committee that is. So I, I do think, I, I'm quite enthusiastic that the, the, the new system that we have adopted in the last, well, eight weeks or so, will lead to the kind of changes that you've outlined to deal with some of the weaknesses that are historic in this council, for whatever reason. And I, I do have one technical question, Mark, if that's okay. When you first started, you gave the example of the journal entries. Now, many, many years ago, councillor Hudson will be aware of this. When, when I was doing journal entries, it was literally in a journal with, you know, pen, columns and all that kind of stuff. Can you assure us that all these processes are automated now, they're all online, electronic? And so therefore, it shouldn't be that difficult for, to require a process where somebody else authorizes a journal entry rather than the person who's made that journal entry? Or are we still talking pen and paper? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. So fortunately, so we are now fully electronic. So the council has a, has an automated ledger, so, and I, I don't pretend to be an IT expert. So, but my presumption is that parameters that can be put in that would require the authorization of, of journals. But yes, the processing of journals is done through your, through your general ledger, which is IT-based.
Thank you very much, Mark.
Thanks, Stuart Kelly's got his hand up, Stuart?
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, just, during the presentation, you made a comment about the value for money judgment that you were planning to make. Obviously, we haven't got that in front of us at the moment. I'm not sure the timescales of that or whether that judgment will also form part of the, the final, if you like, statements of accounts, the final audit judgment. At the moment, we just have parts of a jigsaw with, is it, would this be the purpose? Or what, I mean, I'm a new member, which is why I'm showing such ignorance on the, on, on the, on the process. And obviously, the process has probably been disrupted, for want of a better word, by the, by, by the constraints of, of the, you know, the public health emergency. So would this be, would this be part of what we would expect to see in, in December? When, when all these various elements are brought together? I'm conscious we're looking at draft things today.
Thank you, councillor. So, so yes, we, we report the, well, I recognize that you're a new member. So, so I'll, I'll talk to you a little bit about what we do and how it's different from, from perhaps a commercial audit. So, so in a commercial audit, as, as we all know, so basically you audit the financial statements and you give the opinion on the accounts, so they are true and fair statement. So because the public sector is, is not subject to market forces, the, the National Audit Office has determined that is auditors have to take a, a view around the economy efficiency and effectiveness of authorities. So, and that covers three areas. It covers your financial sustainability. It covers informed decision making, which is basically governance. So, and it covers your partnership work, working. When we set the audit plan, we determined that the risk around value for money, around the economy efficiency and effectiveness was around financial sustainability. So that's what we'll report back on. So when we come back, hopefully in December, then I'll give you two judgments. I'll tell you whether your accounts give a true and fair view of the, of your transactions during nineteen twenty and whether the balance sheet is appropriately stated. I'll then move on to the value for money conclusion. And as I said, that will be adverse and that, that adverse opinion or conclusion is all related to the financial sustainability of the council. So, and I suppose that the letter says everything that I will say in the adverse value for money con, conclusion. So I, I suppose my reason for saying that, councillor, is that I don't want you to wait until the sixteenth of December so that, you know, these significant financial risks need to be addressed by the council as soon as possible.
Stuart, do you want to ask your question next?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. So fully supports us coming back in December and I have a, an amendment to the, to the recommendations. I'd like to move as an appropriate point, please, Chair.
I'll just bring, I'll just come in on this point, Stuart, because a lot of people have mentioned about an audit meeting in December. And from memory, we have got one penciled in. I don't know whether anybody's had diary invites yet, but there is one penciled in for the fifteenth of December.
Right, but I've, I've moved amendments to the recommendations. In any case, that's the appropriate point. That's okay.
That's fine.
So thanks for your report, Mark, and thanks for your candour. Just, just a couple of questions. First, first one, in, in your letter, you, you mentioned that you, you, you're monitoring revenue monitoring reports and you're reporting on, on quarter one. And I'm, I'm sure you're aware of quarter, quarter two, the deficit positions improved somewhat. It's now fourteen point seven million, as, now, so nearly halved. So it says an improving situation. And, and obviously, you know, COVID has, has had a massive impact on, not, not just WIRL, but I'm sure all councils and their financial resilience. And also, fully agree about our level of reserves. You can only spend the reserves once and it's not sustainable to, you know, to keep, you know, drawing on reserves to, 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 to plug funding gaps. However, no government has, as in the past, encouraged councils to use the reserves as an alternative to, you know, proper funding. Now, I appreciate the point you make about the financial stability with the council. But I'm sure the, the message needs to get back down to central governments in, in some way. That, that the, the, the funding of local government, full stop, is not sustainable and that the answer now has to come from the centre. Okay, thanks, Chair.
Thanks, Stuart. I know, Chair, you've got your, your hand up as well, but if there's nobody else other than Chair that wants to speak, I'd like to put my pennyworth in for what it's worth. I did read the report that you sent, the financial sustainability, and I was, I was going to hi, highlight the salient points and ended up highlighting everything, more or less. Quite damning reading. Over the last year or so, in, on the Audit and Risk Committee, of which I've been a member, we have looked at controls that don't seem to have been in place with, with regard to no PO, no pay. The last audit meeting, Keith Patterson gave a report that basically showed that in a lot of cases, procurement has been robbing Peter to pay Paul. So where there's, because I was asking why, why when the, the, the year, the, the amount that was, was, the procurement amount was not actually a budget. In effect, there didn't seem to be any budgets that anybody stuck to. That if somebody was under budget in one department, they thought, well, we'll pinch it from him and give it to somebody else. And a lot of that seemed to be adult and children's social services. Also with the no PO, no pay, which I'm sure you're familiar with the four associates, that came to light that with the no PO, no pay, that there was, there were no controls as to who was deciding how, how much somebody should be paid for doing a job. Procurement, I think, no PO, no pay. The journals that you've mentioned were basically the same person is doing the journal and monitoring it is not adequate in any organization. The other thing I wanted to have a word about is council tax receipts. I did ask Diane Grisdale for some information, which she very kindly gave me. And I'd, I'd asked about how we go about ensuring that we maximize our revenue with council taxes for the twenty twenty one year. The council tax base was a hundred and forty two million pounds or four hundred and forty two and a half million. And so I wanted to know how much had been received so far and whether COVID was being used as an excuse by people not to pay their council tax and what our procedures were for getting council tax money in, in terms of an attachment of earnings, how far down the pecking order council tax collection was as opposed to child support agency. And we, we, we do, we do come a little bit down the pecking order, but certainly we're above any other debt that somebody might have. And the other issue was that what do we do about, well, apart from obviously attachment of earnings and going through the courts, which I know during COVID, the courts have been closed and so there'll probably be a backlog. But that we do take rigorous action against people that don't pay their council tax. And also, what happens where people who are on benefits and don't pay their council tax? Because there may be an, I want to say an incentive. If you don't have any assets, then there is nothing for the council to put a CCJ against. But I do understand that we can send the bailiffs in to procure items of value. And I know councillor Lewis has alluded in the past to business that we've worked in before, both of us, where we would rigorously, in, you know, in the private sector, we would rigorously, rigorously enforce enforcement to collect debt. But anyway, I did ask DI what the council tax receipt rate was. It had been suggested in the past that it was about ninety seven percent. But DI had given me a figure that the council tax recovery rate at the seventh of November was sixty four point eight percent compared to sixty six point four the previous year. And I wasn't sure, and I, I will ask DI to, to, to reiterate whether it's correct. I wondered whether that was sixty four point eight percent of non-paid council tax. So debt recovery was sixty four point eight percent or whether it was sixty four point eight percent of council tax receipts and how that works out through the year. Because you would expect to see, and I made some notes here, up until the end of October would be seven months. And so you would expect to see a council tax collection of, well, seven months' worth of that, which would be sort of eighty three, eighty three million or thereabouts. And so if we've only collected sixty, sixty four point eight percent, we will only have collected fifty million, which would be a thirty three million shortfall on the amount that we would accept to receive. Now, I, I don't know whether that's accurate or not, but certainly we've got two ways to go. We can make sure that every penny that is spent is spent wisely and it is not wasted and that every money that's due into the council is collected and rigorously enforced. And the other issue, which you've, you've alluded to in your, your statement, financial sustainability, is the plans that the borough has in terms of WIRL Waters and Hind Street and all the different developments over the years. Now, WIRL Waters' planning application was passed ten years ago. It's only now starting in the last year for spades to be in the ground. Nothing's come to fruition yet. And my concern is that when it comes to the MHCLG giving a capitalization plan, that they will only capitalize COVID-related debt and nothing else. And if with the reserves as low as ten million, which, that's the other issue, who arbitrates as to whether ten million is, is sufficient? Ten million to an individual is a Ten million to an individual is a lot of money, ten million to a local authority isn't. So I wonder whether or not ten million has been woefully low to be proceeding with. We've now got to the position where with an overspend the way we've got now, that, that there is no way. I can't see how the council can be sustainable, because if, unless we get a revenue stream in, in the next two years, so that by twenty twenty three was sustainable, then in twenty twenty three, we'd be having the same conversation. I, I find it difficult to see, although I think people are working very hard in the council to get that revenue stream on board. But we have had ten wasted years. We needn't have been at this position if between twenty ten and twenty fifteen, we were doing what you're suggesting we do now. And we have to hit the ground running. And I'm sure I've been very impressed with council offices over Covid and especially Paul Sator and his team. I think that, you know, there's the, the will is, is there to do a marvellous job. But we are, we are in a very precarious position. And you have said in your report that even you realise that in twenty twenty three there, there are no reserves to use, there won't be anything. And you mentioned just before, it's, it's not even two years, it's only fifteen months. And I do feel that a lot of controls that should have been in place years ago have not been. I, I wasn't in this position, so I can't comment. But I, I do feel that, that there has to be an absolutely massive sustained look at everything that is spent. And, and basically, I mean, we did, we did have last year when there was going to be a twelve million overspend that was, that essential spending only was the way forward. But we've sort of gone past that slightly. I know Stuart alluded, and I'm sure Chair, Chair will come in in a second and say that the thirty million deficit has reduced now from, from June to now, to fourteen and a half million. So I've said what I want to say, although I could say more, but I won't. And so I'll ask, well, Mark, do you want to come back on any comments that I've made? And then I'll ask Ian Lewis and then Chair, because I think Chair will have more to say. I can see Carl Greenie's put his hand up. So if we say, Mark, if you can come back on the comments that I've made, and then Ian Lewis and Carl Greenie, and then Chair can talk about everything else and the comments that other people have made. I'm not leaving you to the last on purpose, Chair, other than the fact that you will be able to answer questions that have arisen between me and Ian and Carl Greenie. So in that order, over to you, Mark.
Thank you, Chair. So I think that's a really insightful and sort of helpful, sort of discussion of where Wirral is. So, so I, I suppose my response is that you need to do all of those things. So, you know, if I just start from, from where you, you did. So, so you're a large organisation. So the only way to, to manage this effectively is to have what we call a good control environment, where the procurement controls, purchase orders, all, all of that has to work effectively. Because that's the only way you maintain sort of financial rigor. In terms of, you know, council tax collection or, or business rate collection, you, you need to be really clear what, what your policies are. So I, I can't dictate those policies, that's for you. And then you need to collect that income in accordance with those policies. And, and I'd have thought sort of a ninety seven percent collection rate wasn't unreasonable. So you do need to benchmark yourselves against other councils and aspire to, I suppose, to the higher of those recovery rates. You, you have to have rigorous budgetary control. The, the sort of the exponential run you were talking about in social care. You're not in a position where that can continue to happen. So that, that will significantly damage you as an organisation if, if people overspend. So budgetary control is, is really important to, to you. I think there's an element of you cutting your cloth now. So, you know, you have a level of resources and you need to make sure that the services that you provide fit within the envelope. And that you do may maintain a sustainable level of reserves to take this kind of shock. I don't think any of us expected this Covid shock. So so that's a short summary of yes. Yes, I, I agree you need to do all those things. Thank you, Chair. Chair, you're still muted, sorry.
Thank you. So, yeah, Ian Lewis and then Carl Greenie and then Chair, please. Thanks.
Thanks, thanks for bringing me in again, Chair. I'm, I'm sorry to hog it slightly, Mark. While the Chair was speaking, in my time on Audit and Risk, we, we've come across various examples of what you could describe as poor financial controls. And, and the Chair has listed some of them. I think most notably for me was that the lack of controls over purchase orders. So people were ordering things without any valid purchase order processes being in place. Are, are these things that you would expect to find or have found in other organisations? Or is this something that's been peculiar to Wirral? Because I, I'm quite surprised sometimes when we hear these things and you kind of think, no, this can't be true. You know, we must have got the wrong end of the stick or it, it's an exception. But it, it does seem to be that historically, this has been not so much an exception, but more the rule. And I, I think it would be remiss of us not at this point, Chair, to credit the new senior leadership team that we have in the council, whether that's Paul Sator's team or even the, the new political team that we have in the council. But I, I am, I am surprised at the, the, the level of poor controls. I'm not an accountant, I'm not an auditor. Some of what I read is, is sometimes difficult to take in, Mark, but the most basic things, even to me, seem to be lacking. So, so I, I think the fact that we are now tackling those does give us as elected members some reassurance. And certainly, I would encourage you and your team to continue to highlight any controls that you think should be in place and that aren't. I, I think for, for those of us who have to answer for these decisions that, that have to come up, it really is a case of now is the time to wake up and smell the coffee. We can't really continue to escape these decisions anymore. So I think, I think we are in a position now having to explain why these have come about. And you, Chair, have mentioned some as well. My concern is, is not only with our debt collection, but also the fact that if we don't do these things, then the people who will suffer the most aren't, with respect, Mark, it's not you and Grant Thornton. It's not the senior leadership team of the council, it's probably not even the councillors on the council. The people who will suffer most if we don't get a grip of this are the people who depend, depend on the council for their income or their services or just to keep going at the moment. And they are the people who, who will, who will pay the price if we don't get a grip on our, on our spending. Because if we don't get a grip on it to make sure it's going to the right people in a right way, then they will, they will lose out. We won't, but they will. And my last point is, is one I've been meaning to ask for a while, Mark, actually. It's not so much on these accounts, but many, many years ago, councillor Stuart Kelly and his colleagues then, we passed a notice of motion, which is a procedural device for the council to say, we want the council to do X. And the council passed a notice of motion to say that we would, we wanted to look at zero-based budgeting in a way to kind of shake out some of the spending that was historic and to get correct use of assets and all the rest of it. I, I'd be interested in your opinion, obviously not relevant to these accounts, but I'd be interested in your opinion on zero-based budgeting and whether you feel that is something that we as a council need to now urgently look at to address some of the issues that you and the Chair have raised in this meeting. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Ian.
Thanks, councillor. There's, there's a lot there. So, so in terms of, of controls, I, you know, again, I, I suppose I repeat what I said earlier. Controls, it's, it's vital that you have an appropriate control environment. And your internal auditors play, you know, a significant part in sort of reporting to you, you know, when those controls aren't working as they, as they should. And, you know, and it's really, it's really positive that you, you know, you are receiving the messages when things aren't, aren't working. In terms of whether, you know, do, do we find control due deficiencies at other councils? Yes, we do. So particularly around procurement, it can be, you know, no purchase orders. It can be significant waivers of procurement rules where you're not sort of like ensuring you, you're taking the most competitive quality-based tender. It, it's how you respond to it. That, that's the key thing. So, you know, and it is important that once you've identified these things, that, you know, the people who who aren't following the rules, that they're, or that they're made to. So that, that, that's the only way you'll get grip and control in terms of the, of the finances of the council. And, you know, you're talking about violence earlier and so on. And, you know, and I agree entirely, local government is, you know, I've worked in local government all, all my life. It's an essential part of the, of the fabric of, of our society and delivers some really vital services. So, you know, it is important that you sort of, you know, focus on what you can deliver and what you need to deliver as, as a council. In terms of zero-based budgeting, it's a lot of work, is what I would say. It's a lot of work. I would only go down that route if you don't have, have confidence in the budgets that, that you've set. You know, so you're sort of have concerns that things have been spent in ways that you, that you didn't need to spend. I, I think there are other ways through it. I think sort of, you know, when you come to the, set, set the budget for next year, you know, that conversation with officers around what's a statutory service, what's a non-statutory service, what options do we have? I think that's equally effective in terms of identifying the areas where, where the Councillor may want to stop his expenditure. Thank you, councillor.
Thanks, Mark. I can see another hand up as well, which is, gosh, Adrian Jones. So, Chair, sorry to put you a little bit further down the line, but if Carl Greenie wants to come on next and then Adrian Jones and then Chair, thank you.
Right, thank you, Chair. I'll declare an interest on what I'm about to say anyway. But as I've, I sit on the board of Directors of Systems Vice Wirral. And I have been a senior manager in Systems Vice Service for a long time on legal services. I also drew up the fair debt policy with the local authority. And I also spent many years as a self-employed consultant on debt, representing people in the courts for bankruptcies and debts and amongst the Manchester rates courts include the council tax. And council tax areas is not caused by, maybe interfered by itself as people looking at the cover of Covid not to pay it. It's council tax areas come about by people being in poverty, unemployment, sickness, cancers, all sorts of things, low-paid jobs and years and years of austerity in this country. People do not avoid council tax debts, they will try and pay them. And the bailiffs and the use of the bailiffs by this authority, which has been suspended, which is a good thing, is not a way of recovering debts from, from vulnerable people. The, the very, very tiny fraction of people where bailiffs are useful for. Bailiffs and an affable and a stay in aid to be using to be collecting debts of low-paid and vulnerable people. And I think as a council, and certainly to be voiced in this committee tonight, is not acceptable. There's ways of actually getting, allowing people to pay their debts and to prevent people getting into debt. And that's what we should be pursuing as a council, not sending bailiffs after people to take their fare to intelligence and all the rest of it. So I would like that on record. Thank you.
Chair, you, you're on mute.
Done it again, I've mic. Adrian Jones, please.
Yes, and thank you, Chair. Can you hear me?
Yes, can you?
Okay. Well, councillor Greenie took about fifty percent of what I was going to say. So I have a little bit less to say. A little earlier, Chair, you, you spoke of a period of debt accumulation, quite rightly. I'd remind the committee that at the beginning of that period of debt accumulation, a new council inherited a projected budget with a built-in multi-million pound projected debt. And that was on top of a nine million pound, I think it was nine million pound loan over twenty five years to finance the mass redundancies of our staff, which was the result of the, the Cameron Clegg government's austerity. So since then, a new council has, a completely new council has engaged entirely new leading officers. I, I think I can safely say with exceptional competence, precisely in order to restore stability following the austerity policies that the new council inherited. So, Chair, what you said, Chair, was not incorrect, but it does need context. Thank you.
Thank you, Adrian. Mate, I can't see any more hands up, so Chair, if you'd like to come in now.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, just to, I, I guess my hand was up for another reason, which I'll, I'll come to on the end, which was about councillor Whittingham's motion or recommendation to change the, to, to, to bring the accounts back to a further committee in December. Just in terms of commenting on some of the things that have been said. Yeah, I think councillor Whittingham mentioned at the start in terms of the letter written by Grant Thornton, the chief executive. And the, the financial situation has improved now. So we have gone from a predicted thirty million gap at quarter one to now fourteen million. Obviously, the information that Mark had at the time in writing the letter was on quarter one figures. So obviously, you know, he had to reflect the figures that we had at the time, but yes, it has improved. And just in terms of some of the content in the letter, Chair, so you mentioned referred to our use of reserves, which would be potentially used up by twenty twenty three. And this would be if, if we actually intended to use them. So when I, when we set the budget in March as part of the financial resilience strategy there, there was a plan or an ambition, I would say, not to use any one-off reserves for permanent expenditure. And we do have, we do have a lot of reserves that we are using for specific purposes. And that's, that's okay, so that's allowable. And we do set those aside because we may be wanting to plan for some expenditure in future years as a one-off project. And we will set reserves aside specifically for that. So if it's one-off expenditure, you know, I think it's robust and it's allowable to use that. But absolutely, in, in terms of use of reserves for permanent expenditure, I would never hope myself professionally to do this. Unfortunately, as Mark has mentioned, you know, we've had to do this over the past couple of years and just because of the, the position that we've been in. My first year here, my plan was really to rebuild the reserves. And I didn't, I only managed it in year one, managing to put a small amount back in. I've not managed it since. And hopefully, the opportunity that we have with the capitalisation directive will mean that we can actually in future years put more reserves, put more funding back into reserves. Just in terms of the, the, the asks, I suppose, from M H C L G of the capitalisation directive. One of their conditions of us being able to apply for it or being considered for it is that we produce a five-year plan. And that plan has to be balanced over the next five years. So what they actually want to see is us, the council demonstrating that we can come back on a sure financial sustainable footing over the next five years. And we have produced that plan, it's very high level, to share with M H C L G. And that does show that we are balanced actually over the, over the next five years. So they will take that into consideration in giving us the capitalisation directive. And then just, just one point to note, I suppose, on councillor Greenie in terms of use of enforcement agents. I mean, he is correct, we do use enforcement agents, we do have a robust policy. But we would always use them at the last resort. And, and one of the reasons that we do write to people to ask them, so we will, our, our first port of call really for anybody would be to contact us and for us to contact them so that we can have a discussion with them about how we can set a payment plan up for them, how we can support them potentially if they need to be on council tax reduction scheme. And we do have a council tax hardship fund. And we do have a local welfare assistance fund as well. So when we write to people with reminders and with court action, our first rationale for writing to people is to really encourage them to come back to us and have that conversation with them. And because we would always rather help them out, you know, and, and set payment plans off. And we do use enforcement agents, but, but they are really as the, the very last resort. And we would always, you know, want to, to do that in, in those circumstances, and just for that actual reason. And so that was just my, my comments on, on those, on the questions that have come in, Chair. And I would like to just mention, unless you want to come back on any And I would like to just mention, um, uh unless you want to come back on any of those really first.
I think I think the the only thing that we do need to um get to the bottom of is is the actual collection rate for council tax, because it's such a large amount of the revenue that we have. Uh, you know, revenue and grants, council tax plays a significant part of that. And if we can make sure that we explore every legitimate avenue to maximize our income, it means that we can protect services for those most vulnerable in our community. At the end of the day, as councillor Ian Lewis said, the people that we're trying to protect are those that are less fortunate than us that need the services that we provide. And, you know, so if we ensure that we're prudent with our spending, that we uh maximize the revenue and then, of course, over the next five years, um capitalize on um those um big infrastructure products, projects that will in the future um secure, you know, more revenue um for the borough and make everybody in the borough, uh, you know, live in in a more sustainable environment and um have a, you know, a better quality of life, which is what we're all here as public servants trying to do. So I I think um just ensuring certainly that we 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 keep a lid on costs and um maximize the revenue from from those areas that uh that that we need to. I don't know if Adrian's still got his hand up. I know Stuart's has just gone up. Um, so Adrian, if if you want to speak now, if your hand is up to speak, and then um Stuart, if you want to come in after that. No, Adrian's put his hand down. Um, Stuart?
Thank, 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 thanks, Chair. And and you, I've got a question for Cher. But in by way of comment, you I think you're absolutely right about council tax collection. Though though it is worth bearing in mind, uh, given the the large proportion of housing stock we have in the lower council tax bands. And the the amount we raise from council tax is really really quite low. And no, a one percent, a one percent council tax rise raises about one point three million pounds. Whereas in authorities where, you know, you may well have more, more, more affluence. And it's that same percentage rise, they'll raise a lot more. And I don't know, it's it's one of the issues we face in terms of um no fair funding and uh no fair resources for us. Uh, Cher, you you mentioned earlier that of your um of your in your your plans was to start um replenishing the balances and reserves. And I just wondered if you'd let us know why never you never manage that.
Yeah, thank you, councillor. Just through you, Chair. Um, it's just because um that our financial resources have been quite difficult to balance over the past um couple of years. So um, I think the first year that I was here was eighteen nineteen. Uh, we did manage to replenish them with the uh balances in eighteen nineteen. Uh, we did overspend as as I think um Mark said last year in nineteen twenty. So unfortunately, wasn't able to to replenish the reserves in nineteen twenty. And and this year, obviously, um because of COVID, if we get the capitalization directive, um I would be saying to um MHCLG that I would like to use potentially or hold some of that back to actually replenish some of the balances. I don't know whether they would let us do that. They might actually um want us to reduce the amount of capitalization directive we applied for. Uh, but I will certainly ask them if they would be happy for us to hold some back to do it this year. So uh we'll have to wait and see on that, on that one.
Thanks, Stuart. Cher, do you do you have any indication yet as to whether or not um we'll be successful with a a two year capitalization program?
Um, I don't unfortunately. Um, MHCLG have not um given any indication at all whether they would uh provide it or not um as yet. And I'm still, I'm still liaising with the LGA in terms of the figures that we've provided in in validating those. So um not all, the the MHCLG have not been able to validate all the figures as yet. Um, because we've we've asked for the LGA to to look and validate those figures for us. And I'm just, I've been working with them today and tomorrow to do that. So hopefully we'll finalize that tomorrow. Uh, but but MHCLG have not really given us any indication at all in terms of applying for the capitalization directive, whether we'll be successful. And what what they will do is they will actually apply to HM Treasury on our behalf. So we will apply to them and they will apply to the Treasury. So it's actually the Treasury's decision.
Right. Um, I can see that um David Burgess Joyce, I think, has got his hand up. Are you okay, Stuart, with with that? I don't think you can hear me.
Yes, sorry, sorry, so sorry, sorry, Chair. Uh, Chair's mentioned difficulties that I think I'd know be uh be useful if you can spend on that, but you know, we've mentioned there, we have difficulties when when trying to replenish the reserves.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Chair. I mean, um, there's been, there's been quite a lot. I mean, there's been some savings that have been um recorded as part of the budget that have then actually um not come to fruition uh for a a number of reasons, um really. Um, and also, uh, you know, that I think the um it's been mentioned previously today about the controls and zero based budgeting and providing value for money. I think what we really need to do is a real deep sort of deep dive exercise to ensure that we've got the evidence that we can provide value for money for um every sort of pound that we spend. And I'm not, I'm not convinced that we have all the evidence as yet that we are actually able to provide um value for money. So there's there's a lot of reasons really, um, sort of uh across the whole board. Uh, I I I don't have them all, unfortunately, now, Stuart. I mean, I can uh go back and have a look at those and uh have a look over the past couple of years and previously as to why we've not been able to do that. But um I think there will be a lot of reasons that contribute to it, to it. But I can get you a full uh list of why that is, if 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 you would like that.
Yes, please, that'd be, that'd be cool. Thank you.
No problem. Um, David?
Yeah, th- thank you, Chair. Um, I mean, I do, I do take on board the point that we've probably got quite a lot of A and B banned uh houses, uh but probably all the more reason then to collect one hundred percent of the of the council tax. But the the question I'm looking to uh ask really is probably of Mark again, if he's still with us. Um, I'm just conscious that, you know, do you ever recommend to councils, given your vast experience, that uh, you know, they have a bonfire of the vanities in the sense that um, you you know, obviously, there's things that we have to do as a council that are statutory requirements. And and there is those that you would want to do as a good and caring council, all those kind of things. But there are the other things that councils do that possibly might be a bit of a vanity project. Um, things that a particular group may want. Um, I mean, I'm a cyclist, but I, you know, I I also tend to think that cycle lanes tend to cost a lot of money and don't bring a great deal of return. And I'm just wondering, are those the kind of things that you would recommend as an auditor as well to have that honest discussion with ourselves, navel gazing, or whatever you want to call this? Thanks, Chair.
Absolutely, councillor. So, you know, there's a, there's a reality that you have uh X amount in in finance. So there are certain statutory duties that you have, particularly around social care. So you sort of need to make sure um that there's sufficient resourcing going into that. And then you have effectively what's left. So and then the policy decisions are, well, what what's most important to us? You know, you unfortunately, you have to um sort of approach it in that way. I I suppose the other part of that question is, you know, when you are spending on statutory services, are are you really confident that, you know, every pound is well spent? So, you know, is there, there's different ways of delivering services? So it's all, but yeah, I I think, given in the position that the council finds itself, it has to, you know, it has to reflect on what's important to it and uh and what services it does want to deliver.
Thanks, Mark. Appreciate that. Look forward to the December meeting.
Thank you, Chair.
Thanks, David.
Thank you, councillor.
Um, right, so, um, where are we up to now? Item three under so Merseyside Pension Fund External Audit Findings Report, is that next? Chair?
Yes, Chair.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Yeah, just sorry, Chair, just just um one point to note before um I can uh bring uh Mark back in in terms of the AFR for the Merseyside Pension Fund. Um, councillor Whittingham just recommended just before about having a meeting in December. I just wanted to double check. Um, if the provisional date is the fifteenth of December, uh, the publishing date for the reports will be the seventh of December. Um, and I'm sure, hopefully, Victoria can correct me if I'm wrong there. And I just wanted to double check with Mark from Grant Thornton's perspective, that he will be able to um complete and finish the audit and have the audit finding letter ready by the seventh um of December to be able to be published in time for the committee on the fifteenth. I don't want to put, I don't want to uh put Mark under undue pressure if he's not able to have it uh ready for that date.
I suppose we will fit in with Mark, you know, on on the date. It needs to alter slightly.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, so yes, it it would be useful if I could have a little bit of leeway. We'll obviously, um, you know, we're we're drafting it as we go, so as we we get fi- findings. So you know, so hopefully, as soon as we've finished the work, we'll be able to to give Cher a draft and agree it and um and get it out. So I I I propose a a kind of iterative process where we where we aim for the fifteenth. And if um, you know, if I don't feel confident about that, I may uh just ask Cher to move it a couple of days, Chair, if that's okay.
It's fine by me. Um, I can just see Ian Lewis has got his hand up. Ian, did you want to come in and say something?
Yeah, it it's very, a very unusual journey, not getting a specific answer from an auditor. I'll let Mark off on this occasion. I do think um because of the nature of what we are discussing, I think we do need to be flexible in terms of having a meeting in December. Um, obviously around, whenever Mark feels the accounts will be ready, if we can then organize a meeting. Um, you know, if he if he's got an indication it's going to be ready in a week or so, then, you know, we we as a council can start making arrangements to have that meeting in a week or so, week or so's time. But I I am quite keen, I think like councillor Bird was at the beginning of this this item, uh that we don't let this slip and that we do, we do have a discussion in December, uh when the accounts are ready. I think that is quite important from this committee's point of view, to be honest, Chair.
Absolutely crucial. So, Mark, we'll, we'll work with you to set up a date for the Audit and Risk Committee that fits in with you. Twenty fourth of December's fine.
I will avoid that if at all possible, Chair. So but can I just thank yourself and committee members for being so accommodating? It's very, it's very good of you. Thank you.
My pleasure. Um, so Ian, you've said what you want to say. Um, Cher, did you want to come in now?
Um, yeah, thank you, Chair. It was just the next item really is the Audit Findings Report on the Merseyside Pension Fund accounts. Um, so actually, it's back over to uh to Grant Thornton uh just to highlight some of the issues or some of the uh outcomes raised in the Audit Findings Letter.
Sorry, just before that, I can just see that Joe Bird's got a hand up. Sorry, Joe, do you want to come in now?
I do, yeah, thank you. It's just at the end of that last item, which I I also think it would be useful, certainly for myself as a relative new member of the committee, to have a a private meeting with the auditor. Um, it's it's standard practice in other parts of the economy that boards will meet with the auditor without senior management being present. And I think that would be useful for me certainly, and maybe other members of the committee also. In in addition to the the public committee we've just discussed.
Uh, right, well, I'll, I'll, I'll take some direction on that as to whether that's normal procedure.
I I have no objection to that, Chair, as as the councillor says, but that's quite common in other um uh in other in industries and um and, you know, it just happen um in sort of other ca- councils. Um, to be, to be candid, I I I won't say anything to you that I won't say in public. So but I'm I'm more than happy to have that conversation.
If I could just then ask if there are any other members of the committee that would like to have a briefing with Mark, with other councillors. Um, can they please um indicate, not now necessarily, uh but Mark, if you're um, if you're asked to set up a meeting with any other councillors, if you can let me know, I can ask if any other councillors want to be present as well. Is that okay with you, Joe?
Yes, thanks very much.
Sorry, Chair, just just for clarity. So it's how this, usually how it happens is that there's sort of, you know, you have a pre meet. So uh sometimes with audit committees, it it tends to be sort of ten or fifteen minutes beforehand, just so councillors can ask me questions. So I I suppose it would be, it would be unusual to set up a completely separate meeting.
Right, yeah. Um, Vicky uh has just said that she can follow that up, Chair. So thank you for that, Vicky.
Chair, Chair, on on that, are we going, I'm going to have a closed session, must have a closed session, the whole committee. Maybe immediately prior to.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
Maybe immediate present in the audit committee.
Yeah. Okay, um, back to you then. Oh, no, it's over to you now, isn't it, Mark? On the pension fund.
In in certain ways, it is, Chair. So I'm, so obviously, Grant Thornton, uh, the appointed auditor for the pension fund. Uh, the appointed auditor is um is Grant Patterson, um and the audit manager is um Stuart Bassett. So fortunately, Stuart uh has agreed to come and talk to the audit report today, because um I haven't done the audit. So if it's okay with you, I'm just going to hand over to Stuart, who will take you through the uh Pension Fund Audit Findings Report. Stuart, over to you.
Cheers, Mark. Thanks, Chair. Um, so yeah, as Mark says, I'm the external audit manager for the pension fund. Um, and so this is our audit findings report. Uh, and if if I may, Chair, I'm going to keep my presentation brief. Um, we presented a earlier version of this report to the pensions committee a couple of weeks ago. And also presented this report to uh the pensions board um last week. So, um, just moving on to sort of page one nine nine and page two hundred, which sort of summarized the the high level findings from our report and the key headlines. Uh, obviously, the 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 top item on on the headline slide is in relation to COVID nineteen. Uh, and as Mark mentioned before, our audit has been completed entirely remotely. Um, largely sort of facilitated by the use of Microsoft Teams. And so sort of first thing I'd like to do is just to sort of um give our thanks and appreciation to all of the officers at the fund for being so accommodating and making the the audit process run as smoothly as it has done in spite of the difficulties of working remotely. Um, this report was drafted as at the uh ninth of November. And so you can see on page two hundred underneath the conclusion heading that there are a list of a number of items which were outstanding as at that date. Um, so I'm happy to report now that um we have completed our procedures over the valuation of level three investments, which are the heart of our investments. And we've received our technical response uh in regards to the valuation and presentation of derivatives. So largely, all that's left um in terms of completion of the audit is the the final sort of checking of the file by the review corner and updating our post balance sheet events right up to the date that we signed the opinion. Um, so the key thing is um the opinion which we anticipate we will issue, and pleased to say that we anticipate we will issue an unqualified opinion. Um, which is obviously the right kind of opinion which which you wish to receive. Um, our opinion will include an emphasis of matter, highlighting material uncertainties over the valuation of direct property. Um, this is not a qualification. This is us highlighting a disclosure of significance, the use of the accounts. And um this matter is likely to be common in councils and pension funds across the country. And it's due to um the property values of the fund, including within their valuation report, a material uncertainty in relation to their valuation. Uh, so this is in response to the global impact of COVID nineteen. Um, it's generated an unprecedented set of circumstances uh on which values have had to base their valuation. And so as a result, the values have declared a higher degree of caution should be attached to the valuation, and that normally be the case. And like I say, this is, this type of a disclosure has been declared by the majority of RICs compliance values as at thirty first of March twenty twenty. And so it's not an item which is specific to the fund. Uh, in response to that that uh disclosure within the values report, the fund has included a disclosure within their accounts at note five, uh along with some sensitivity analysis. And as part of our audit work, we have reviewed this disclosure and confirmed that we're happy with it. And like you say, we've included an emphasis of matter, in our opinion, to make reference to this disclosure and highlight it to users of the accounts. Uh, and once again, you know, this is not a qualification. It's merely us informing the reader of the account that this disclosure is significant in understanding the the context of the variation that's at place. Um, so in terms of the actual audit work, you know, we're we're nearly there, about ninety five, ninety ninety eight percent complete, just doing the final checks. Uh, however, we are unable to issue our audit opinion until the council's audit opinion has been issued. Uh, and so um that is, that is essentially what what we're unable to sign off on on the opinion. Uh, one of our other roles, however, is to issue assurance letters um to employer admitted bodies in in relation to the IS nineteen pension liability. Uh, and so we are able to issue these letters to the to the employer bodies. Uh, now that we've concluded our work on the the key investment balances, we do intend to issue those letters in the next day or two, which was one of the items which Mark mentioned as being outstanding for completing the council audit. So that is everything I'm. So that is everything I'm, I'm particularly going to touch on, Chair, but I am happy to, to answer any questions that councillors may have.
Does anybody have any questions? I can see Andrew Gardner's hand is up. Andrew, do you want to ask a question of Stuart?
Yeah, it's not so much a question. It's more just a, a quick note for, for the solicitor really. Obviously, as a member of the pensions committee, I've already addressed and voted on, on this. So I'm just wondering whether I'm marking my own homework here.
No, that's fine, Chair. That's just the structural workings of the council.
Great, thank you, Philip.
Anybody else? Andrew, your hand's still up. No, nobody else? So Stuart, you got off lightly tonight, haven't you?
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, if nobody has a question for Stuart, we'll go on to item four. Rural Council Annual Governance Statement, two thousand and nineteen, twenty. Is that you, Cher?
Thank you, Chair. I'm just going to ask Ian Miles to talk to the committee about the statement. As I, Grisdal mentioned at the start, there is a change as a result of the council's financial situation. We do want to just change one of the comments in the annual governance statement. It will go with the statement of accounts to the committee in December anyway. So the whole pack, the, the council accounts, the Merseyside Pension Fund accounts and the annual governance statement will all be formally approved at the next committee in December. But I'll just bring in Ian now, who can talk you through the statement and the change that we want to make. Thank you, Ian.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair. Paragraph three point seven point three of the committee report summarises the two main changes that were made to the annual governance statement since our meeting in September. That includes the, the change that was requested by the committee in terms of making, including reference to business continuity. But as Chair just mentioned, there is one further change since writing the committee report. That's in relation to making a reference to the, the council's application for a capitalisation directive. So if I could just, in fact, if I could just share my screen, Chair, if that's okay, I'll, I'll just share the wording with you if that's all right.
Yes, that's fine.
So hopefully you can see the, the AGS in front of you. And effectively what we've added here is this paragraph here that is just saying the council has a projected deficit to two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two of seventy-five point six million after sales fees and income compensation scheme of nine point three million. To support this deficit, which is primarily due to Covid nineteen, the council has applied to HM Treasury for a capitalisation directive to fund Covid nineteen losses of income and cost pressures. So that's the change which is, we've been asked to make in, in relation to our discussions with the, with Grant Thornton, the external auditors. So that's the change that we proposed to make. Chair has just added, once we just to update you with the fact that the figures at quarter two were seventy-five point six million. But that will be updated at the time that the accounts and the AGS are signed or brought back to the ARM C because they anticipate that figure will change between now and then. But that's the only other change to the AGS other than the two which we flagged up in paragraph three point seven point three.
Thanks, Ian. Has anybody got any questions for Ian? No. I, I think what we need to do now is to look at the from the discussion that proposed in secondary, we'll now move the officer's recommendation with a revision to recommendation three to read. That a meeting of the committee be arranged to approve the accounts upon the completion of the audit by Grant Thornton. And that a private briefing take place immediately prior to the committee meeting between the external auditors and the members of the committee. Now, that was proposed by Stuart Whittingham. Is there a seconder?
I'd like to second that, Cathy, if that's okay.
That's fine, thanks. That's Kate McCann seconding. So I'll just ask Phil McCourt's opinion as to whether or not we can do this by assent or whether or not we need to take a vote. Phil, could you advise?
Certainly, Chair. You're free to take this by assent. And in the usual way of assent, if any member wishes a vote, then the vote will take place.
Okay, so I'll propose that it's by assent. And if anybody wants to move otherwise, if they could say so now, otherwise there will be a further meeting in December to be discussed with Mark Stocks of Grant Thornton. And that there will be a briefing fifteen minutes or so beforehand with the members of the committee and Grant Thornton. Okay. So if you want to carry on to the, the next part of the meeting. Cher, do you want to come in on, on to this one?
Sorry, Chair, which, which section are we on now? Sorry, my, my screen has just gone blank.
Still, we've got the governance statement. So, and there are questions. Sorry, go on, sir.
Chair, if I may, that was all wrapped up into one. So that was all one item with one movement. So you, you just approved the annual governance statement. That's the entire business.
Yes, because so is that the meeting ended now, Phil?
Yes, Chair, it is.
To the end, yeah. Okay. Does anybody have any other questions then, other than the fact that I'll, I'll close the meeting and we'll await to have another meeting set in December to approve the accounts after, sometime after the seventh of December, probably around the fifteenth. But that will be by discussion with Mark Stocks from Grant Thornton, that it's that it's, it's feasible to do it at that time. Is that okay with you, Mark?
That's great, Chair. Thank you very, very, very much. And thank you for members' time this evening.
My pleasure. And thank you for your comprehensive report. So it just leaves me to thank all the members and Cher and Phil and Diane, thank you for your contribution tonight, and Miles and Stuart from Grant Thornton, and hope to see you very shortly. Thanks very much. Good night.
Thank you. Good night.